I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Monday, November 18th, 2024. At this time, we'll ask our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Ben Warren, to lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Warren.
Thank you Chairman. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. As we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, we thank you for the gift of life and all those you've brought into our lives to lead us, guide us, and to protect us. For those traveling to be with family and friends over this holiday season, we ask that you please grant them a safe journey, and may all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize the elected officials that are with us tonight. First, from Holly Ridge, Mayor of Holly Ridge, Mr. Pete Parnean. And with him is a town councilman, city councilman there in Holly Ridge, is Mr. Walter Zambicki. We also have our Register of Deeds, Amiga Jarman. And then, always with us is Sheriff Chris Thomas. So we appreciate everyone coming out tonight. As I miss anyone, fantastic, thank you for being here. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited, no more than five minutes, and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the agenda. That being said, we need a motion to adopt the agenda. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now approval of the items on the consent agenda. If there's none that we want removed, or anyone wants removed, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Mr. Smithman?
Yes, sir.
I believe we have made it to item three.
We have three people that have signed up for our public comment period this evening. And the first one is Chris Marks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, County Manager. I'm up here tonight to speak about Wreaths Across America. Wreaths Across America was started in 2007, and locally here in Onslow County. Coastal State Veterans Cemetery represents our service members of all branches. There are over 6,000 veterans that are in that cemetery at this time, and sadly, more are joining them, including, today I honor my father, Chief War Officer III John B. Marks Sr., who passed away two years ago today. Also in there, Commissioners, Napp's parents. Rest in peace there, as does Staff Sergeant George Barrows Jr., and many, many more, over 6,000. The reason I asked to speak tonight is I needed your audience. Next year, I'll need you folks, hopefully, as I've not created a nonprofit locally. Currently, there's only 1,639 wreaths purchased for the 6,000 sites that are currently in the cemetery. That's 4,361 short. The national celebration is December the 14th. The cutoff is December 13th. The theme of Wreaths Across America is Live With Purpose. Its mission is to remember the fallen, honor those who served, and teach the value of freedom to our children. So I stand here tonight, actually wanting to speak to you and using this forum to reach out to our citizens of Onslow County. The wreaths cost $17. I will tell you this, if you go to any local store, and I support all of them, you'll not find a more beautiful wreath for $17. For my program, Wreaths Honoring Our Fallen Veterans, I created mine that does, purchase two, get a third free. So for $34, there'll be three wreaths laid. If you pick a specific grave site for your family member, I'll make sure that's put there, I promise. It's very simple. You can go to Wreaths Across America Jacksonville, North Carolina. In the search bar, type in NC0611. There you can purchase your wreaths, and I'll be happy to put your name on my thank you Facebook page. I'm also available on Facebook at Chris Marks with the sunset, or sunrise, depending on how your day is. And I've created a group site, Wreaths Honoring Our Fallen Veterans. I realize there's no actions that'd be taken tonight, but I thank Commissioner Napp for listening to me and offering me the five minutes to come here and speak, not only to you, because next year I hope to be a nonprofit and do the proper way, but also to reach our citizens of Onslow County, because many don't realize Wreaths Across America exists. December 14th, I'm sure some of you will be there for the wreath laying. Volunteer groups such as the Boy Scouts, Knights of Columbus, Knights of Columbus Fourth Degree, many other groups will be out there volunteering. And once the families get to lay their wreaths, the groups lay theirs. And it's a beautiful sight in the years past to see 6,000 grave sites with wreaths. I thank you for your time. I thank Onslow County citizens for considering, donating. These men and women fought for this country. I also do hope for the Warriors Lounge out at the local airport, and talking to the young Marines who are coming to go to Camp Geiger for training, say, "I don't think I've done enough because of what the veterans who lay there now did." And I tell them this, "You're a hero because you raised your hand, and you swore for four years you'll defend this country." I thank you for your time, and I thank the Onslow County citizens for their consideration. Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving. Have a blessed night.
You too. Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Ari Wakavitz. Please tell me, I got it close.
Do I push the button, or do you?
No, we did.
Okay. Thank you for accepting public comment. I have comments on two issues upon which the Board of Commissioners has control, and will express them both within the five-minute limit for one. First, public meetings should be inclusive spaces that do not violate freedom of religious practice. Some members of the county do clearly worship the deity invoked today. Some, however, choose to worship other beings. And some instead choose to place faith in humanity to make compassionate ethical choices, ethical use of scientific processes, and social justice to combat mechanisms of systemic oppression, believing that if there were any deities worth worshiping, we would not face social evils like the institutionalized racism and the policing of bodies by the state. While the Board does not control policies regarding all those issues, you do control how you conduct your invocation. Violating the spirit of the First Amendment by including a spoken prayer to a gendered deity in a public meeting is acting in bad faith toward the public you choose to serve, and changing this policy is only one small step in the direction of more just, inclusive governance. Thank you for including a more inclusive moment of silent reflection and the statement of respect that preceded it. I recommend removing the gendered deity prayer prior to that silent invocation, in which all people present are welcome to invite their respective deities into the space to support them and bless the proceedings. Second, people of color are still disproportionately affected by the social evils, not limited to the two large ones I mentioned. Sorry, I skipped a couple things for time. And the city of Jacksonville made a public show of wanting to seem more progressive by adopting Juneteenth as a recognized holiday before it was nationally recognized. So thank you for that as well. But in these meetings, the Onslow County Board seems sometimes to bend to the will of white supremacy, not only, but quite egregiously by catering to not-in-my-backyard oppression tactics to limit access to affordable housing. And to quote from the United American Indians of New England, "Since 1970, indigenous people and their allies have gathered at noon on Coles Hill in Plymouth, Massachusetts to commemorate a National Day of Mourning on the U.S. Thanksgiving holiday. Many native people do not celebrate the arrival of the pilgrims and other European settlers. Thanksgiving Day is a reminder of the genocide of millions of native people, the theft of native lands, and the erasure of native cultures. Participants in the National Day of Mourning honor indigenous ancestors and native resilience. It is a day of remembrance and spiritual connection, as well as a protest against the racism and oppression the indigenous people continue to experience worldwide. I hope the county commissioners and citizens who have fought against affordable housing efforts will take time to reflect during the rest of Native American History Month and the holiday season on ways to provide more equitable access to county resources for the benefit of the whole community in the coming year. Thank you again for the important work you do."
Thank you. Mr. Smithman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Taylor Green.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna, good, if you don't mind, I'm gonna play a video of what we go through every day, because the county commissioners have taken away the gun range, this 500 feet. So our neighbors have a private gun club, they're 500 feet away, they shoot constantly, seven days a week. There's probably 50, 60, 70 members. Major Scott's conducted an investigation with the Sheriff's Department. He says they're taking donations. They're a nonprofit. But yet, the county, Carter Metcalf, has said, well, they've sent them a letter saying that they can't shoot, not shoot, but this was taken this past Sunday. So it's really what we live through on a daily basis. And-
Mr. Green, if you'll just stop for a second and press pause on that, because part of our rules or procedure is props and things of that nature. So if you just pause that and continue with your, what you're speaking on.
Okay. So, but you hear what I'm talking about, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I mean, you understand what we go through. This was this past Sunday at 4:00 PM.
Right, right.
There's multiple weapons out there. They shoot all the time. They don't stop. The county says it's the Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Department says it's the county administrative code, they can't enforce it. The sheriff wants to help out, but he can't do anything because of the county commissioners, the way the ordinance is written, they can't- Carter acts, to me, I've got a 50C filed against me for stalking because I called the Sheriff's Department so many times because they're shooting. It's cost me $2,000 in attorney's fees. It's not fair to me to have to do somebody else's job. They're shooting in the general direction of our house. I mean, that's every day. That's all day. It starts, it can start as early as eight in the morning and go, we've got video at 9:30 at night. Nobody seems to do anything about it. Nobody wants to do anything about it. I've gotten Royce involved. Royce has been to a meeting. Finally, it took five or six weeks to get a letter out. It's been two and a half months. This was this past Sunday. They were shooting today. They started at about 8:30, 8:45 this morning.
Okay.
And it's dangerous. They're shooting, there's no regulation out there. They're shooting at any time they want to, at will, and nobody's doing anything to stop it. It's horrible.
Have you, I guess, we've got your address and everything, so.
Oh, yeah. Well, had a meeting, and still nothing's come of that. I called Carter then. So, because the 50C got filed, my attorney told me not to call the Sheriff's Department, who were documenting it, the thing. So, worked out something with Carter, called the inspections Department. Well, nobody ever answers the zoning phone number. So you have to call the other line. Those girls don't really know anything. They told somebody about it today. But Carter's informed me that, well, you know, we have limited resources. We can go out there maybe two or three times and check it out, and if nothing's happening, not much we can do. It's not fair. It's, you know, if this was 500 feet from any of your houses, you wouldn't be letting it happen. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
That's our final speaker, Mr. Chairman, the end of public comment period.
All right. Fantastic. We'll move to item four, presentations with the Jacksonville Ospreys, which I believe is going to be Mr. Eli Patino instead of Mr. Dylan Hughes, who is the general manager there, I believe.
Okay. Thank you for having me, Commissioners, and bear with me as a worker of technology here. So, again, my name's Eli Patino. I'm joined with our GM, Dylan Hughes. And just want to thank you again for your time, and as we share some highlights from our 2024 inaugural season. So, intro to Jacksonville Ospreys baseball. We're a summer collegiate baseball team. And our mission is to provide a great place for collegiate athletes to develop their craft of baseball, and aspirations to go on to play professionally, or to move on to a higher level of college baseball. But also, another pillar of our mission is to bring our community together, bring families together, and inspire our youth, our local And so one of the big things that we did throughout the season was fan engagement. So, it's typical of, whether it's minor league baseball or summer collegiate baseball, to have some sort of fan engagement going on. One thing we did with the Jacksonville Ospreys this summer, that we, early on, set a goal for ourselves, is to have a theme night every single night, to provide as much entertainment, as much engagement with our fans. I could tell you through our research that we are the only team in the Old North State League, which is the league that we're in, the third largest summer collegiate league now in the United States. But also even other leagues in the general area, the Coastal Plains League, we're the only team that provided theme nights each and every night for our fans, for ultimate engagement. So, on top of that, Orville the Osprey, our mascot, has made many appearances, whether it's on base, military get-togethers, or community functions such as schools, and nonprofits, and things of that nature. One thing I'd like to share real quick, we had a great comment towards the end of the season. We had a family with, a young family, husband and wife, probably in their mid-20s, with a three or four-year-old daughter, come on the field, and thanked us personally for bringing baseball to Onslow County, because they said, quote, "They said, 'We don't even watch baseball. We don't even know the rules of baseball, but our daughter loves coming to these games.'" So, that's the ultimate compliment, because these are not baseball peers, or people that even follow the sport. They just thought it was a great place to come together with the community. And real quick, before I proceed, one thing too, as far as that player development portion, Onslow County was instrumental in providing funds for the players to develop their craft. I can tell you firsthand that the players overwhelmingly loved it here, and we'll get into that later in the presentation. One thing that they loved, and I'll use J Mac, Jason Mack, he's a UNCW baseball player. As you know, UNCW is a top baseball program, not just in North Carolina, but throughout the entire United States. He's coming back again this year, because he says he loved playing baseball in Onslow County. He thought it was awesome. And a lot of these players have never even been to Onslow County, let alone heard of it, or Jacksonville there, and they loved it here. So, we'll talk more about that. So just want to say thank you for the funds that you guys provided. The players and the fans appreciated it. It made the difference in, you know, whether we provided a subpar or average program to something that was definitely above par and more than what people were expecting. So, thank you. All right. Some things we did as far as community engagement, we did a nonprofit, what we call the nonprofit team-up. It's basically at each home game, we partner with a nonprofit so they can run a 50-50 raffle, set up their tent, further their calls. We did announcements, or the P A system, to kind of help them, but also help us get the word out there. And together, we raised a little over $6,500 for nonprofit dollars that went directly to the nonprofits. We anticipate that to increase dramatically over the years come. Another thing too, we established was our Batter Up for Books reading program. So we reached out to Onslow County Schools, and basically what we did was we provided free of charge a bookmark for all the elementary-age kids, and actually, we had extras, so we provided some extra bookmarks to all the middle school kids. But we also provided over 3,000 game day tickets free to Onslow County Schools to give to those students that met their reading goals at their individual school. So that was great. Great to be able to promote reading among our youth. Economic impact. So many residents report that the Ospreys' baseball is, quote, "What our community needed." I'm sure you guys heard the same sentiment from a lot of people. Players and their families visited Onslow County. As I mentioned before, a lot of our players have never even been to Onslow County, let alone even heard of Jacksonville or Onslow County. And it was the draw of summer collegiate baseball, especially from people from, say, Indiana, or Ohio, or somewhere up north, where they want to come down south. And to all these players, I can tell you, they all think of Onslow County and Jacksonville as a beach town, beach community. I know for us here, we're a little spoiled being this close to the beach, but to them, they loved it. So. And then, the players' families also came and stayed here. We surveyed the players. It looks like about 75% of our players that were not from the local area. Basically, their families came down and stayed in air maybe, hotels, whatnot, and spent money here locally. So. And although it's hard to measure the greater economic activity, I would, you know, Ospreys' baseball was very positive attention overall, as far as bringing baseball to Onslow County and Jacksonville. So we're going with some basic statistics here. So, our average attendance was a little over 450 people per game. Just a quick note, six and under were free, free attendance. We had a lot of youth. Youth was one of our main focuses when it came to baseball this summer. As far as summer collegiate baseball, that is a pretty robust number. But this is our first year. I could tell you that if I walked into somewhere in April with an Osprey shirt on, a lot of people didn't know what it was. But if I walked into Sam's Club to buy spoons for my business in Emerald Isle, the lady at the counter was asking me, "Is there a game tonight?" On top of that, although we started this in early spring, it wasn't until the season was over until Colonel Derrick and Lieutenant Beer, and all these different leaders on base, were reaching out to us on how they could partner with us going into next year. So although we didn't see a lot of Marines there, it's kind of hard breaking that barrier, if you will, trying to get that information on base. But it definitely happened after one season, and I anticipate a lot more Marines showing up to our games. That's part of the anticipated growth there. One thing that was definitely vocal, although fans loved it, and they thought it was great, amenities were stretched a bit, especially when it came to concessions and seating at times. So that's something we're looking at to see how we can accommodate that for the fans going forward. This is one of my favorite things to talk about, and I think you guys will take a lot of notices. The players, we had 22 ballplayers that came from 15 different states and four different countries. We had three players from Tokyo, Japan, and a player, Noah Gagel, or team clown, if you will, and by the way, he's coming back for another season. He's from Canada, and goes to school in a D1 school in Texas. And we had several ballplayers come from the Dominican Republic. And they loved it here. We surveyed the players, and we left that survey, that Google survey, optional to leave it unanimous. So they didn't have to leave their name. All of them left their name, left their information, and they had nothing but positive things to say, and some recommendations of how we can improve it, which we already shared with the powers that be. But overall, all these players essentially went back to their programs, back to their schools, back to their communities, and told their fellow players, their families, their schools, how great they had a time here. In fact, a team that beat us every, almost, I think, almost every game in our conference, Brunswick Community College, Brunswick Surf and Turf team, excuse me, one of their top hitters, Jordan Overton, goes to a D1 school in New York. I received a message on Twitter from his coach, I didn't know his coach at the time, called him, and he said, "Hey, I got a player here. He played down North Carolina. He said he hammered you guys every time he played you guys at your place, but he doesn't want to play for that team. He wants to play for you guys." He liked the vibe. He liked the community. So I sent it over to our coach, Coach Josiah Zamora, and an hour later, we had him sign and roster. So, by all this happening, the brand ambassadors, not only is it good for, good rapport for Onslow County and Jacksonville as a whole, but frankly, the player, the level of caliber of players we're going to track is going to get higher and higher, because it's such a welcoming place for these players to come play. Holes families. So, our holes families are the backbone of baseball. In fact, all summer collegiate baseball, regardless of where you're at, without holes families, there would be no summer ball. Our holes families, we treated them like royalty. We did everything we could to make them happy. I can tell you, every single one of them, they're, I say this in the most respectful way, they're fanatical for Ospreys' baseball. They, we actually just did a potluck lunch at Jacksonville Commons a couple weeks ago, where we got together, and we all brought food, and we just broke bread together and got caught up on things. All the families said, "Look, we're in for next year. We can't wait till May to come." So thankful, thankful for our holes families. And a lot of these holes families had youth in their households. A lot of them were athletes. And two of them in particular, I'll tell you real quick stories, is Chris Hawkins, catcher out of Clear University in Michigan. He's coming back again this year, again. He's, he stayed with the Blaze family. They had a 13-year-old catcher, only child, no older brother, no younger brother, no sisters, nothing, loves baseball. Well, him and Chris, all summer long, played video games, played baseball. Caleb came out to all the baseball games, and when we caught up with the holes families at our potluck, the, his parents were like, "Look, he is doing things on a level when it comes to baseball, just maturity-wise, that he's never had, he's never had this type of role model." Let's just put it that way. So that's a great thing. And then we have the Nicole Lovejoy family. They have a much younger child, but the kid refuses to play any other position than first base, which was their player played, and wear that number that that player wore. And so, great things with the holes families. Just wanted to share that with you. And the picture here is actually two of our players from Tokyo, Japan, with the Latimore family. So, as far as future outlook goes, I think this is something that's going to happen, obviously, each and every year. One thing we want to make sure that we're doing, we're going to put together all that hard work to make sure our fans, our entertainment, entertain to the max. It's, we want fans not just to think of this as baseball, rather, a community gathering that everybody, whether you know the rules of baseball or not, whether you've been to a baseball game or not, that you can come together here and have fun, and especially for our youth to have a good time. Two, these players are brand ambassadors. Each and every year, we're going to get more and more players coming from different places. In fact, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I was looking at the recent roster, we even have a player that plays at a D1 college in Texas that is from Australia, believe it or not. So believe it or not, we're going to have an Australian baseball player come to Onslow County. Who would have thought? And so, and two, the youth are going to be inspired by these collegiate athletes. We saw that all summer long, as they got autographs from these players. And then, over time, bringing hundreds, if not thousands, of families together in a family-friendly, fun environment in our community. So. So some immediate needs, and we shared this with the city of Jacksonville, with the Jacksonville TDA, and something we wanted to share with you guys too, at Onslow County level, is that there are definitely a need for some improved or robust concession operations, or concession stands, if you will, some added bleachers, or something that should be, hopefully, on the horizon to accommodate, you know, additional patrons. The long-term needs, just things that kind of coincide with these things are player clubhouse, and storage, and press box, and things of that nature. VIP seating, we got a lot of sponsors. The sponsor support has been excellent, but a lot of them had asked, "Hey, when can I get my VIP box? When can I get this?" And I said, "Well, in time, we're going to..." These things are, you know, attainable, I think, over time, but just something we want to share with you guys now, and hopefully follow up in the discussion here really soon, on how we can, see how we can team up and maybe work on this together with the City of Jacksonville and TDA partners. And I believe that's it. I'll leave it open to any questions that you may have. So.
All good. Fantastic. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We'll continue with presentations, and I think Mr. Kevin Patterson is coming up now with the finance officer here.
Thank you very much. Take the opportunity to provide a quarterly financial statement. This will be a regular basis. This one will be fairly short, and I will be looking for feedback over time. This one will be fairly short, and I will be looking for feedback over time to find out what information that we can provide you to help you make better decisions. Also, with this, the information that you're having, because we are also in audit season, the information we're providing is not audited financial statements. As a matter of fact, these are not necessarily, you'll notice, your budgets don't balance because we did eliminate certain items out of the presentation. We did not put in appropriated fund balance. We're also not showing transfers between funds. The reason for this is, that is something that is a budgetary function, that does, that's just the movement of money versus actual revenues and actual expenditures versus coming to give you actually decision-making information. With these, focusing on the general fund, of course, we are looking at it. Right now, we have a total revenue of $39 million through the first quarter versus $34 million the previous year. Most of that is an increase in ad valorem taxes. But we are still currently on track to go off and meet our revenue goals for the year. Now, with ad valorem taxes, just looking at the collection cycle throughout the year, this is going to be a very repetitive cycle. You'll notice the red, the orange, and the gray lines overlap significantly. These are the last two years. The blue line is the current year, and of course, we're only going through October when I pulled this graph, but you'll notice it had a big increase in August. That was a difference of the last week in August and the first week in September. You'll notice that decline in September, so those numbers balanced out. That was a minor timing difference. But with Onslow County, you do notice a significant increase in November. This is primarily because this is when one of the mortgage servicing companies goes off and settles out their escrow accounts. And you see a significant increase. As a matter of fact, we just received a check for $53 million from the same company settling escrow accounts last week. So that will put November back right up on top of our current targets. Of course, we will see increases in December and January as well, up through that first full week of January. After that, ad valorem taxes significantly drop off. After March, when the past due taxes are subsequently re-advertised, our primary collections for ad valorem taxes are going to be motor vehicles throughout the remainder of the year. So you will see that our revenues in government is, of course, they're predictable but highly Same thing with sales tax revenues. They do fluctuate a little bit more, but you will see the cyclical nature of sales taxes. You can track into back to school, you can look at the Christmas sale purchase after that, and then going back up into the beginning of summer, you see a spike, an increase again. One thing you'll notice on here, because we do receive funds three months delayed, we also, at this point in time, or when we pulled this report, we had only received the sales tax revenue from the month of July, and that is the gray line, which is significantly higher than the previous two years. So we are seeing an increase in sales tax revenues again, so that's a very positive Also looking to break out the expenditures, rather than going through all the numbers, again, looking at patterns. Our total expenditures are actually slightly lower than what they were last year, but that, our salaries and operations are slightly up. Our salaries are up about $2 million because of the salary adjustments that have already been made through the cost of living. But the total, the reason that it is totally off is because debt service came off the books last year, primarily as some of the school bonds were finalized last year. And right, so right now, a lot of our debt service for this year will spike again in December and June. Also breaking out, again, looking at how salaries are broken out into types, like looking at salaries, which is a significant number, because, of course, county government is a personnel business. Operations, that's also high, but then again, you also understand, operations also includes funding of our public education, our public schools, as well as community college, which are significant numbers in those. Capital and debt service. Capital is low right now because that's the timing of projects as they develop, and of course, debt service will see, those funds will be funded 100% by the end of the year. And again, just looking at exactly where we are, how those numbers break out, again, salary is our primary number in most items. Our largest capital, our single largest operating numbers, again, are going to be in education. That's where we fund. The rest of the time, our county operations are actually controlled fairly tightly. And then also just breaking out the category by, the spending by function. And again, you'll see on the far right, we spend primarily in education, then public services, and then human services. So again, the vast majority of the county's budget goes back into the community, back into protecting the growth and the benefit of the citizens through fairly direct services. And I'll try to go through this fairly quickly. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if there's any point in time, I'm happy to take additional feedback or request for additional information.
I'd like to ask a question, if I could. The school funding-
Yes.
-and the bonds that were just paid off, how much are you anticipating that they will not need? Or will they still need the 36.6% that is part of the budget now? Since the bonds are being paid off, is that going to be a credit back to the citizens?
The debt service would be a different item than the operations. The set funding formula for current operations or current funding is a separate item for those. Debt service and capital are a different level of funding. We have scheduled meetings with the school boards this week, with the superintendent this week, to look at the capital needs for the schools, trying to develop exactly what that next three- to four-year capital need is going to be.
Is this going to trigger a formula change? Or will it do that?
Yeah, I think one thing to make, to ensure everyone is on the same page, even though we are retiring debt for the school projects, all that debt is paid out of our general fund. So none of it comes out of the school budget. We pay that freight every time they, just like last month, we borrowed $14 million for a school renovation. We will pay all the debt. It is not in their annual appropriation. It's not in their annual appropriation.
Okay.
We track that number as education and debt service.
Okay.
But it's there, and again, we'll be looking at exactly how that number, how those numbers plan out for the next.
How does our sales tax collection at this time of the year compare with last year's? Do you have that handy anywhere?
Yes. Actually, right, for the month of July, we collected about $400,000 in excess of what we did in previous year. So that is an increase, and right now, I'm not seeing anything. We should be receiving Augusts this week to find out if there's an additional correction, but right now, I've not seen anything that should change that pattern. But the August collection should stay stable. After that, we will see a decline, but I'm not aware of any additional pressures in our sales tax collection, such as the Medicaid Home Harmless Swap, that has significantly impacted other communities. I've not seen that as a major key here.
Any other questions? Fantastic. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Good job.
And just as a quick point of, we do have two of our accountants, our deputy finance officer, as well as one of our accountants, that have, are working on their certified finance officer credentials, and our deputy finance officer has passed three of the four certification tests for that, and our chief accountant has passed two of the four tests.
Fantastic. Congratulations. Thank you. Mr. Smitherman?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's appropriate to turn the meeting over to Carter Metcalf, who's going to come up and brief you on the Dumas rezoning.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners. Our next item before you is the Dumas rezoning. Well said, Mr. Smitherman. It is P R Z 2024 number 19, and the applicant is Amar Abdul Ahmed Dumas, and the owner is the Doris Marie Sweetie Ayers. So we look at an overview of this request, and the requested change is from rural agriculture or RA to highway business or HB. One tax map number in question, 1309-94. Location is at 410 Bear Creek Road, and it is in the Swansboro Township. Rezoning area is 1.68 acres and is the entire parcel. The existing use has a variety of uses, is predominantly an abandoned gas station, so a commercial use, but there are also residential structures on the property. When we look at an overview of the services, there's two different onwasso water mains in that area. There's a six inch along Willis Landing Road, and then a four inch along Bear Creek, as this property sits on a corner lot. The wastewater for the property is individual septic systems, and the fire service is northeast Onslow with an ISO rating of four. The most recent traffic count we could get was 2022, and a trip count of 3,700 trips. Staff estimates the capacity at just below 15,000. Schools serving the property are Sand Ridge Elementary, Swansboro Middle School, and Swansboro High School. And with the rezoning to commercial, we would not expect new additional students, even though Sand Ridge Elementary and Swansboro High School have capacity, while Swansboro is over capacity, Swansboro Middle School. Here is the location of the lot. Here you can see it's rural agriculture. That light blue nearby is community business. While we wanted to keep the scale in check, we compared other comparable intersections in the area. All of them had a community business, none had highway business. As we compare the two districts, you see the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet for RA, and its purpose is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low-density single-family residential developments and limited commercial uses. As we compare to highway business, there's no minimum lot size, and it's to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major corridors, where, again, there is sufficient transportation and utility infrastructure capacity to support development at that scale. So we take a look at the comprehensive plan, Horizon 2040, details the future land use categories, agriculture, forestry, and its intent is to preserve and protect that rural character and working lands while providing for limited low-density residential development and non-residential uses that would support those rural residents and those agriculture and forestry operations, hence the name. And again, it's intended to preserve those areas and, again, represent that key heritage of our community. When we look at how that's practically applied in our land use and development summary, with this being our proposal to highway business, we look at that non-residential section, and it's primarily for agriculture and forestry uses, and uses that would support those industries would certainly be permitted, along with very small retail service and civic uses, preferably at crossroads. Take a look at the comprehensive plan. You can see there the agricultural forestry designation for not only that property, but also the surrounding area. So look at environmental conditions. There are no regulated flood plans on the property, no wetlands delineations were submitted to staff, and no regulated blue line streams. So we take a look at reasonableness in the public interest. The proposed rezoning could be considered reasonable due to the property being situated at a crossroads of Willis Landing and Bear Creek, and is only supported by one policy in the comprehensive plan, 6.2. 6.2 details that we want a wide range of commercial activities at and throughout the county. Then we can, could be considered unreasonable because it is not aligned with the future land use map, as highway business is not an appropriate category because highway business would have regional-scale uses, and the comprehensive plan would want small retail. It's not supported by objectives 1.1, 2.2, and 3.2, and detailing those are in your staff report. Then, when we look at planning board, they heard the item on October 3rd. Voted at a split vote, three approving, two recommending denial of the motion for approval. The applicant was present but declined to speak. We had one citizen that did speak on the request, and their concerns were regarding potential uses for the property. There were no military impacts, though, that were presented at that time, and remarks from our planning board chairman detailed that even though the motion was approved, the chairman and the vice chairman both objected, and the rezoning would be inconsistent with the purpose of highway business since the property is not on a major road or intersection. A more appropriate zoning would be community business. Here you can see a look of the aerial for the property, and see the surrounding area. Again, that existing gas station is there on that front right corner. Detailed in your staff report of attachment two is a violation letter that our staff submitted due to work on the structure that was done without a permit. Here you can see the front of the property. There is a new sign on the property, or on the structure. They did obtain a permit for that. So as respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R Z 2024 number 19, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. And as well, if the desire is towards approval, it would involve an amendment of the future land use map towards a rural residential category. This concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Smitherman, ready to open the public hearing?
Yes, sir. At this time, we will open the public hearing, but we do not have anyone signed up to speak, Mr. Chairman, so accordingly, we will close the public hearing, and the board may deliberate on its decision.
Motion to deny.
I would second that.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I can't vote on something that's in violation of a comprehensive plan that we just spent a lot of work producing.
Any other discussion?
It's pretty clear cut.
All in favor of the motion to deny the rezoning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We'll move right to item seven, managers' comments. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. Revenues are up and expenses are down. That's what I got from Mr. Patterson. I call that a good report.
That's good.
And we did budget aggressively on sales tax, so it's great that the first month came in well above last year's numbers, so we, things look good. Did want to mention that this Friday, we will have our fall harvest celebration, where we will be honoring our employees with major milestone anniversaries, and that's going on, does that start at 10:00?
One o'clock.
Starts at 1:00. So we'll be looking forward to honoring those employees that have major milestone anniversaries. We will also, in December, we will begin a series of listening sessions where we, and I mean management, will be listening to every single employee in this organization to talk about what our values mean. What do they mean to you? What does this look like when you see honesty in action, or you see resilience in action? So it's a, it's a multi-month engagement where every employee will be able to tell us and meet with us face-to-face and talk about how we recreate the culture of our organization around those values. Likewise, in December, the management team will be in all of the municipalities. Likewise, in December, the management team will be in all of the municipalities, going to each of the municipal board meetings to tell those boards and communicate to those boards what you seven have accomplished this year. So that is a major effort that we are undertaking to end the year so that our municipalities have not, can know about the hard work that you have charged us with doing and that we have accomplished in 2024. And then finally, I would like to encourage Sheriff Chris Thomas to keep his beard. It's apparent that he is trying to emulate my look and mention, asked me if it was a two-day or a three-day beard that I had, because that's what he wanted to maintain. But the Sheriff's Department is participating in No Shave November, and it sounds like they've raised a lot of money for a good cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. We appreciate it. Now we'll move right into Commissioner's comments, and we'll start first to my left, but before, while I let Mr. Commissioner Scott speak, he will, this will be his last meeting with us for a while. Just a couple of things there that we, number one, we appreciate your service to Onslow County, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Scott's a native of Onslow County, and he's been here a long time, but he's also traveled all over the place.
Amen.
And learned quite a few things that he's brought to this board and has been instrumental in things that we have done, and we appreciate that work. Mr. Commissioner Scott has a, a history of service to his community and to his nation. Commissioner Scott served in the United States Army, so obviously, we appreciate, appreciate that service to his, to his nation. Mr. Commissioner Scott didn't stop there. Commissioner Scott also spent quite a few hours on the sidelines of football games, officiating football games in the, in the community and throughout the state. He's been recognized in being able to move up the line and officiate some really, really instrumental ballgames, but I think one of his favorite things to do is, is wrestling official. That is, that is his best, and he's called on often to give advice or confidence in what officials are doing on the wrestling mat, what they need to work on, improve on. He's been instrumental in, in a lot of that and working with kids. One of the things he's proudest of are the kids he's got to know on the wrestling matches he's officiated over the years, is what they have become as young men in, in the, in the nation, and not only going off to school, but also going and serving in branches of the military service. So he's, he feels like those are his kids, and he appreciates being able to work with them. He moved from that and has continued his service to the community, running for County Commissioner and serving on this board for the last four years. So without a doubt, Commissioner Scott, your service is, is to your community and to your nation. We appreciate that service. We appreciate the fact that Laura Scott is here tonight as well. I will say that is his favorite Laura Scott, and if he says anything otherwise, it may not be a long walk, it may be a short walk out to his vehicle tonight. But Commissioner Scott, we appreciate the, the service you have to your community. You have done a, a great job, not only as a Commissioner, but as a citizen of Onslow County and a citizen of this great nation in the service and the things that you have done. With that being said, Commissioner Scott, I turn it over to you.
Got a few comments. The most of all that, that's been contacting me lately are the duties and responsibilities of the County Commissioner. When I took this oath of office, I knew what I was coming into. There's specific in the general statute to become a Commissioner in the state of North Carolina and the individual counties. The County Board has the responsibility of hiring County Manager, the County Attorney, if we had a clerk to the Board to do that, and the Tax Administrator. We're also tasked with ensuring the safe working environments for all employees. Public safety, ensuring the safety and welfare of all residents. Adopting an annual budget and setting the property's tax rate. Adopting, approving new positions within the county government through the recommendations of our County Manager. Long, long-range planning and development, capital improvement plan, CIP. We do have a CIP. We need to manage it a lot more closer and a lot more frequently, but we do have a plan. Okay? Zoning and land use. Local ordinances and the, the ordinances that govern the day-to-day operations of what we do within the county. Okay? Contacting and ensuring the contracts are approved from the Board of Commissioners. Service levels. Establishing service levels of areas like emergency services, public health permitting, environmental health, and social services. Approving members to each advisory board. A liaison for servicing the local boards or federal and state boards of government. I've been privileged to serve the county of Onslow County for the last four years. I will never forget you, and I will never, ever run from an issue. I have been privileged to travel over 66,000 miles in Onslow County alone and doing the state business at, at, in Raleigh and this other areas. I have addressed 2,189 issues that I have sole documentation for. I've also had the unpleasant, the unpleasant, addressing 185 issues that were never addressed. I'm not stopping, but I do want to give a shout-out to the Board of Commissioners and to our County Manager. Mr. Smitherman has took the bull by the horns. He has made some tough decisions, along with the approval of the boards. He's made some real tough decisions. We have prioritized as a board of the things that we want him to look at first. I can go into specific detail, but I will not go in and demeaner any part of the responsibility for every Commissioner sitting on this board, because the responsibility we have, that's what we got. But every bit of this is under general statute. David, I want to commend you for bringing to a light the issues that were not addressed early on. We've had families that have been affected. We have employees that have been affected. Onslow County is a good place to work, a good place to live in, and an outstanding place to raise a family. All these things that our manager and the Board of Commissioners and the incoming Board of Commissioners that's going to be addressing is not going to be addressed completely in two to, the two to three years. It's going to take three to five years. We've got areas that are in desperate need of improvement. I don't say problems, desperate need of improvement. And I'm gonna let you in on a little secret. I have been asked, Walter, why would you sit on the board knowing that you don't have the support? In the Bible that I read, and the God that I serve wants us to stand fast, and he wants us to be bold, and I give him the credit for giving me the ability to carry out my duties and responsibilities. When you get on this board, you're not given a roadmap of exactly how it's supposed to be. How you conduct your office is between you and whoever you think, and I praise God for giving me the strength and the courage to let me stand for the citizens of Onslow County. God bless you. I am coming back, or I am going to try my best. God be with y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Next one lined up is Commissioner Price. Commissioner Price has spent two terms basically on the board with us, I do believe, and Commissioner, Commissioner Price is from Duplin County, around the town of Titi and Wallace, and Wallace is what he calls, don't call it Titi, it's Wallace. He is, you know, pick on him all the time, but he's done well to be a graduate of N C State University. But that's just a joke. Commissioner, Commissioner Price is proud of that history and master's degree from North Carolina State University. Mr. Price spent one year teaching at Southview Senior High School out in Hope Mills. Then Commissioner Scott, our Commissioner Price made it to Onslow County and where he spent 29 years teaching in the Onslow County School System at Southwest High School, where he was instrumental in, in quite a few things. He was the department chair there for a while, the history department, was the head JV coach football for a while, won some championships in, in that area, and then they, they pulled him up to varsity, and he went to work on that offensive line and other areas with the varsity team. I think he has four.
Four state championships.
Four state championship rings that I feel sure he displays proudly at his home and has fond memories of those, been instrumental in the shaping and molding and building of young people in his time in education and, and coaching as well. Commissioner, Commissioner Price and I used to talk about politics and running for office because we, we talked next door to each other, and that was something that we always talked about, and we never expected to see each other on, on the board here working together, but we've been able to do that. I could go into some stories of Mr. Price, but if any of you have been in a meeting with Commissioner Price, you would know that when he sneezes, it gets everyone's attention, and if you have a weak heart, do not attend a meeting with him unless you're prepared for that. I did have a moment at Southwest where I heard a loud bang and a sneeze in the classroom next to me. My kids in my classroom looked at me as if, what in the world is going on? So I immediately ran out my door and into his classroom to make sure everything was okay. The only thing I saw was in the corner was Mr. Price, flat of his back, his chair legs up in the air, because when he sneezed, he pushed off his desk and flipped himself out of his chair. So we enjoyed that story, Commissioner Price.
Definitely a 10.
That was, that was a 10. That was a 10. His wife also, Lisa, couldn't be here with us tonight, but she too is a retiree from the Onslow County School System. So without a doubt, Commissioner Price has had that service to community, service to someone, something, organization, everything greater than himself. So we appreciate him. If, if you're having problems budgeting with your home checkbook, let Mr. Price take over your register for a month or two. He can fix the things that you're facing.
And say, only when he starts to bid on a cake, though. When he bids on a cake, watch it.
He'll bid on a cake at the, at the center there. So Commissioner Price, we appreciate all that you've done in your service to community, and I know you'll be moving on, and we're looking forward to what you may do in the, in back home in, in Duplin County.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Price?
First of all, I want to say congratulations to those who won in the general election. I hope you feel called for such a time as this and have devoted a lot of prayer and, and thought to it, and I believe you have, and, and we'll be praying for you as well. I did enjoy attending the Legislative Goals Conference, and always, I love talking about policy and problems and trying to think about ways to approach them. So I appreciate the Board for putting their trust in me to be the voting delegate for that as well, and thank you a lot. You guys didn't have to do that, so I appreciate that a lot. That's one thing that, that I probably don't do enough is thank folks. You know, I get used to thinking that, hey, people are doing their jobs, that's just the way it's supposed to be. But thank you, Rose, for all that you've done, Ben, and all the other assistant managers, and Mr. Smitherman as well, for the department heads, for all those who were, who commit their service to Onslow County. It's been a tremendous honor to have served eight years as a County Commissioner. As a matter of fact, I consider it the greatest honor that I've had is to have served. I never saw it as a burden to serve as a County Commissioner. As a matter of fact, I enjoyed it, even in the tough times, you know, even when it got tough, because it always felt like you're making a difference, and I felt like I was where God had me to be, and so when you're there, you can rest in that. You can rest in it, and you don't have to be antsy about it, because you, you could have a calm assurance about that thing. And so, so I want to thank my family for putting up with me and, and all the things that went along with the, the time that I had to spend, first of all, as a teacher and football coach, and now as a County Commissioner. I like to think that sometimes, how could you be a County Commissioner without being a football coach? Because it's fourth and one, you know, you're always wrong. Yeah, so no matter what you did, you should have, you know, if you run off tackle and get the first down, you shouldn't have done that. You should have, you should have done run a counter or something else or a quick pitch. And so, and so that's the kind of thing where I think some of those experiences prepared me for being a County Commissioner. I think, I think football had a lot to do with preparing me anyway, and, and being the person that I've become, and so I do, I do appreciate that, and I want to thank you, everyone that's been involved in that. And there's so many things, I probably shouldn't have written all these things down, but I didn't, but I just, I don't want to thank everybody for what they've done for me, and I look forward to staying informed about what's going on in Onslow County and, and doing things that make a difference, because that's, that's what drives me, is to do things that make a difference. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Let's stay right here to the left. Commissioner Carpenter?
Sure, I figured you'd do that. So first of all, I do want to say a thank you to Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Price for serving, and I do believe that it is important for us as citizens to do what we're called to do, which is to represent citizens, to serve our communities, to, we have a representative government, and I think everybody's got a duty to do that, and I appreciate that both of you took this very seriously, that you are thoughtful commissioners who expended a lot of energy that I think most people in the public did not see, but behind the scenes, your dedication did not go unnoticed by me. I'll miss seeing you guys to my left here, and I will not miss your sneezes, because they have scared me to death. But best wishes to both of you, and I know we'll be in touch. So regarding just the gentleman that came, Chris Marks, and I'm sorry that he left, but I'm going to go ahead and say something about what he was talking about in representation of the Reeds Across America. That is a phenomenal organization. I've had the pleasure of serving, I mean, not serving, but in putting the Reeds on the graves over the course of a number of years as I represented the Onslow County Republican Women's Club, who participates in that each and every year. And we have a team of people out there all the time, and there is true joy in being out there in the masses and honoring the veterans that have served us, that lay there in that cemetery, and it is quite an honor. So if you haven't already bought a wreath, I would encourage you to follow the directions that he was saying before, and look them up on Facebook or Reeds Across America online, and try to, try to help out with that. Seventeen dollars each is nothing, and I know he was saying the buy two and get three, and that's really just a wonderful thing. And also, I appreciate so much, too, that he's also a Hope for the Warriors volunteer over at the airport. That was something I was going to bring up, because as most of you know, I serve on the Airport Advisory Commission, and it's quite an interesting meeting to attend all the time. We are looking for more volunteers at the Hope for the Warriors table there at the airport, so if anyone's interested in doing that, that would be fantastic. At the airport, from our meeting last week as well, we still have, I swear, this is just the most amazing thing, the parking lots, parking lot garages revenue, whatever parking lot gauges the revenue, is up 10%. It's like a incredible revenue source that we don't even know that we're having out there, you know, regularly, and we're not even at Christmas time. We weren't even at Thanksgiving, so it's bringing in lots of great money, and hopefully we'll have more spaces in the future that, so that people don't have to park on the grass. Art in the Airport is going to be on November the 25th at 6:00 at the airport, and this is going to display high school students' art, so I encourage you to go. It's really always interesting. If you ever fly and you can see it, they display it there as you go into the TSA line. It's fun, really wonderful. Mr. Patina, the Ospreys. What a wonderful experience that was throughout the summer. It was so great. I am a big baseball fan, played at my, well, I didn't play baseball, but I played softball a lot as a youth, and I just loved it so much. There is a sense of energy. I just loved it so much. There is a sense of energy out there and family. And watching the kids get so enthusiastic for rooting for their teams was, I think, one of the greatest joys for the summer for me. So anyway, participated in the Marine Corps, not participated, watched the Marine Corps Birthday Celebration, the cake cutting ceremony that they do, celebrating the 249th anniversary of the Marine Corps. I cannot imagine what it's going to be like next year in our city and county when we celebrate 250 years with the Marine Corps. It's going to be a little crazy, but the tradition that they display is just incredible. And the last thing I'm going to say, which was also a highlight of the week, I went to the Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development Partnership Small Business Grants Award Ceremony, which was hosted by Duke Energy. And it was so incredible to see nine different, some existing, some newer businesses locally receive grants of $2,500 toward their businesses so that they can continue to grow and maybe provide new services. And it's just, that partnership, Jackson Joe Ed, just does a lot of wonderful things. And I just want to thank all of those people that are involved in that organization for doing what they do to provide economic development to our county. So lastly, is just a great wishes of Thanksgiving to everyone and their families. There's so much to be thankful for. I know things, well, I have a lot to be thankful for. And I just, I hope that we can all really look to that as we get into the holiday season. So have a wonderful week and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Bennett, you ready?
You're going all the way to the end this time.
Go over to the right and come back.
All the way to the end. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank the speakers who are here today, tonight, and Mr. Patino, we appreciate the Ospreys. And I enjoyed the ball season, too. Mr. Green, I thank you. We've been around this issue many times. It's, I tell you, it's one of the challenges of an urban, growing county, is trying to figure out how to weigh these issues between the rural and the urban areas. I moved into the city, so I don't have to worry about that. But it's something that we have to, this board's going to have to work on, trying to figure out where the right balance is. I want to thank this board for our strategic focus areas that we've been working on, that the manager's been working on. I would say if you don't have this little budget booklet, you ought to get ahold of one. I'm sure we have them here somewhere. But it has our five strategic focus areas in it. I was privileged to be able to speak to the Holly Ridge Town Council and the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Realtors recently about the strategic focus areas of the county commissioners. And I think we're moving forward with those with haste. We're getting there. It's going to be good for Onslow County. I also want to thank Commissioner Scott for your service. Certainly been an interesting time. And we've, I recognize your passion for the citizens of Onslow County. I appreciate the opportunities that we've had when we could, when we could work together and come together on issues, several issues that we've been able to work together on. And I appreciate that. I appreciate your service. And Commissioner Price, we go back to 2016 when we were first elected. And I would say of Commissioner Price, he's been a consistent conservative voice for the citizens of Onslow County. I appreciate the opportunity that I've had to work with you for eight years now. It's been, it's been good. We don't always agree, but I know you can listen. So I wish you both the best in whatever you do in the future and look forward to seeing you, see you around. And I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Walter and Mark, thank you for your service. I've enjoyed working with both of you. Mr. Green, I don't know what to do there, but I can tell you this much. I've been instrumental in helping build Jacksonville's firing range a long time ago, 30-some years ago. The only thing that we did for the neighbors is that we respected them. There was no shooting on Sunday and we were not allowed to shoot after 9:00 at night. But that's, what I'm talking about, that's what we did with the neighbors. We worked together with the neighbors. I don't know what we can do there. I don't know if we can add any, anything to the ordinance. I just don't know. But when you start talking about the 500 feet, if you try to do something there, you're going to run into a big headache, because if we were to change it, you're going to have people that would be grandfathered in. So that runs into a problem. So I agree with you. And I don't know what we can do, but I'll tell you this much, we'll see what we can do. I mean, that's the best thing I can do there. The other thing for our staff, I mean, it's been an honor for me and a pleasure, the citizens of Onslow County, to see fit to elect me back again for four more years. I have 20 years of service as of December. I will have 24 years when I leave here. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the people of Onslow County. And it's been, I've watched a lot of things in the last 20 years. And I noticed some people in the audience, like Tony Pageant's been around me a long time. And he's watched the growth of Onslow County, that the growth that we've had here for the last 20 years is amazing. I mean, you can look around all the construction. The building you're in right now is one of the things. This, the courthouse, the tower at the airport, the new terminal, new schools, I can go on and on. The new garage, animal control, addition to the animal control. There's so much stuff that I've seen over the years in growth. And I've watched so many people come and go. And now we've got one of the best sheriffs I've ever had, Chris Thomas, is a super individual. I've worked with several of the sheriffs that have been here over the years. I started out with Thomas Marshall. I was a mounted deputy sheriff when I first come here many years ago as a marine. But I can tell you this much, our staff works so hard to get things together. And I have enjoyed working with our assistant county manager, Janelle, here the last two or three weeks. I know it's been under a lot of duress for both of us and for the staff here, but I want to share one thing. Our staff works so hard to make sure that we serve this community to the best of our ability. And I can tell you, it's been, it's been an honor, Janelle, to work with you very close. And I want to tell the manager, I appreciate what you've done. And I want to appreciate the team. I mean, I don't know how much to say. I mean, you all heard me say it more, more times than one, that we have the best employees that, in the country, not just in Onslow County, not in the North State of North Carolina, but the whole country. For the Ospreys, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate that. And Chris Marks, I know his daddy, knew him very well. And I think maybe we can help there. I think Lisa hit it on the head, seventeen dollars is not a whole lot of money. I don't think there's no problem with that. I think I could buy three or four of those things with no problem. But I want to thank the people for being here tonight. It's a pleasure to serve and I'm going to continue to give you four more good years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Vice Chairman Knapp?
I'm sorry, I was cracking up when he said mounted horse. Was that before the invention of the car that you started with the PD? That's what I was thinking. But anyway, I've got a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Walter Scott and Mark Price for their service as commissioners. It takes a lot to stick your neck out to run for election or reelection. It just takes a lot of courage. It takes a lot of patience. And I just want to say I appreciate that, because Mark, you and I started together as well, 2016. I was the shortest guy in the election area. And I saw Mark, I didn't know who he was. I thought he was some pencil neck. And actually, we turned out to be a great guy. We became really good friends. And I'm going to miss your wisdom on this board, but I'll get with you later on some other stuff that, I'm not done complimenting you. So one of the things, you know, you talk about leadership and you talk about serving your board, like Mr. Buchanan has served, what, 20, 20-plus years? Going on 24. You know, one of the things about being a commissioner is to serve with humility. You're here, you're a servant, basically, to the people. As Tom Homan would say, our new borders are, you're the taxpayers, we work for you, plain and simple. And I'm really excited about Tom Homan, by the way. But anyway, that's another story. But being a commissioner is thankless. We sit up there and answer phone calls and emails. We have to listen to every citizen in this county that we represent with their issues, their particular concerns. And we have to do it with open ears. And anybody tells you that a commissioner job is part-time, they're lying, because it's full-time. And I know that for a fact on several things that I've had to do. And for Mr. Foster, it's like a full-time job as a chairman. He's always in a meeting. He's always doing this. It's a busy time. But I appreciate the people that supported us, that got reelected again, because that just shows your confidence in our abilities and what we've done. And it's self-gratifying to know that we're appreciated in the sense that we must be doing our jobs correctly. So for all the citizens out there that voted to get myself reelected, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to all of you. I sincerely appreciate that. And as Commissioner Buchanan said, I'm going to give you my best four years and then we'll go from there. And I'm going to do everything I can to help and promote Onslow County. Kind of want to segue into our staff. I want to echo what Commissioner Buchanan said. I've had some recent interactions with Janelle Galloway lately on some animal control issues. The professionalism that's being displayed throughout our county government is second to none, plain and simple. You can see it around you. You can see the progress, everything from the branding to the posters that are in there, the innovative ideas, the acceptance of technology, using that technology. It's very impressive. It's very impressive. And David, your leadership has been spot-on. You're very, David's a unique one. He, when he's wrong, he tells you. And if he's wrong, he'll admit it to you. But that's not unique. That is a trait of leadership, the ability to admit when you're wrong and to accept criticism. That's what a good leader does. And short of that, probably the most important part of being a leader is, other than leading out front or leading by example, is humility. A good leader has to have humility. And I appreciate that, you and Dave. You have the humility. You like to listen. You're not critical of opposing ideas. And that's refreshing. We can have a decent, honest discussion, even though we may disagree with each other. But your insight is uncanny and your perceptions are pretty spot-on. So I appreciate you and the staff. And I appreciate all the county employees, because we have a staff second to none in the nation, I believe. We've got a top-notch staff. And our assistant county managers are doing an incredible job. Ben and Janelle and Carrie, she's not here tonight. You guys are doing a fantastic job and I couldn't be more proud. Even the fact that you're a Georgia Bulldog, Ben, I'll just let that go. But kudos to you guys. Mr. Patino, good to see you. There's nobody in this room that loves baseball more than me. I played baseball all through college, coached my kid, watched him play in college. I just loved baseball, 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 baseball. And when the Ospreys came last year, I went out to several of the games and it just brought back a lot of memories, you know, of me playing ball, my son playing ball. If you don't know baseball, just the sound of the ball hitting the glove, the bat, just the little nuances of baseball, the smell of leather, the feel of rosin, you know, pine tar, everything, especially with the wooden bats. It is a refreshing atmosphere and it's really exciting to watch these college players play. They're playing D1 ball. And baseball's probably one of the hardest sports that you can elevate yourself in the college ranks. Very difficult, very difficult to make it to the pros. I think the percentage they had was like .0110 of a percent of people that played Division One ball or AAA or AA make it into the big show. And that's, so if you get to the big show, you're one of the best in the world. And a great atmosphere. I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I appreciate the atmosphere that's generating with our kids, gives a sense of belonging to the people here. And I think that's fantastic. So keep up the good work. Mr. Green, I listened to your complaints. I'm a pro Second Amendment guy. You know, I'm retired law enforcement, but like Mr. Buchanan said, I understand your concerns. That would annoy me, too. I mean, I'm used to gunfire. I'm used to hearing it. I was a firearms instructor. But 8:00 at night, 8:30 at night, constantly, and I keep hearing in the public, you know, rat-a-tat-tat or whatever, that would get on my nerves, too. I'd probably go out there with my weapon. But anyway, I understand what your concerns are. But like he said, we probably have to reexamine the ordinances if we can do anything. And we have to be very careful where we walk, so we don't trip over any tripwires in terms of how it's going to affect the other shooters in the county and some of the gun stores. But I did pay attention to you and I do feel your concerns for what you're going through. So I appreciate you coming up. I want to congratulate Tony Pageant. Raise your hand, Tony. Tony's a newly elected member to the Board of Commissioners. It's not his first rodeo. He's been a commissioner before. I think you were a chairman at one point in the past, correct? But it's refreshing to see somebody running for an office that comes to the meetings. He comes to the meetings, he pays attention to the meetings, which to me, my perception is, he's, he's trying to learn the new processes, get a feel for the board. And it shows his interest and concern and his dedication to serve the people. And I appreciate you coming, because this has been like the seventh meeting in a row that you've been to. You didn't have to come, but yet he's here, participating in the crowd. And within the next month, you'll be up here, participating as one commissioner. And I personally am genuinely looking forward to working with you, Tony. You worked on the county staff. Your thinking is like a lot of our thinking. And he's a straight shooter. He'll tell you what he thinks in a heartbeat. Let's see. Also, don't let me forget, the Christmas parade is this Saturday. So please come out and attend. I know a lot of the commissioners are going to be in that parade. It's going to be really nice. It's going to be a lot of people. I think it's probably going to be a record crowd this year, because I think the weather's probably going to be warm. So please come on out and support the Christmas parade, because I know the Jacksonville Commerce or Chamber of Commerce puts a lot of work into it. And Chris Marks, you heard Chris talking. I'm familiar with Chris. I worked with his brother. Him and I were fellow supervisors together in NCIS, Kevin Marks. Chris is just a good guy. He's got a heart to serve. He's really taken off with the Wreath of America. My wife's bought several of these wreaths. My mom and dad are buried in the cemetery here. My father-in-law, he's also a Korean War veteran, so she bought a wreath for him. Come out, what is it, December 13th or 14th, whenever it was, and come out and lay the wreaths. It is a sight to behold when you see every one of those gravestones with a wreath that's placed there. It's mesmerizing. It's picture-taking. And it just shows our support for our veterans. It shows support for, for those who have passed and, you know, serving their country. And let's not ever forget our veterans. You see a veteran out there, you thank him, thank him for his service. You see an old guy wearing a Vietnam hat, like Mr. Buchanan said in the meeting before, tell him welcome home. Thank those veterans, because they deserve it. And speaking of veterans and talking about our staff, again, I'm going to shout out kudos to Tom Sherwood, Sergeant Major, who is working on our staff as the H&R Director. And we were talking about it earlier, we couldn't have hired a better man. And I appreciate what you bring to the table, Sergeant Major. And I appreciate your experience and your maturity. Other than that, I just want to say one last thing, because Mark, you got a special place in my heart. We came up together. We became friends. And one of the things about Mark, if there was a word to define Mark, it's humility. And that's why I brought it up. Humility defines Mark Price, other than being cheap, but humility defines Mark Price. One of the things about Mark that I liked, anytime I had to pick up the phone to call him, even though I knew he was going to disagree with me, he had a different opinion, because he's so conservative. I mean, he's, I don't even know how conservative he is. He's way to the right.
Of Genghis Khan.
But he was always receptive. We could disagree on a point and he would point things out to me. I would disagree and point things out to him. Then he'd flip it around me and make me feel stupid. And then he'd point out the errors of my way. But he always did it respectfully. And I really appreciate that about you, Mark. You were, you were the guy that always calmed me down. You're the guy that always, you know, said, take a step back, let's talk about this. And I can't, I'm going to miss you on the board. I really am. Because anytime we have an issue, I know exactly where Mark stands. So then I have to make the decision, do I ask him or just let it go? Because I know he's going to tell me. But I ask him anyway. But it's refreshing to find someone that you can talk to, disagree with, and still be friends. After everything is said and done with, we're friends. And we forget about it. So from a personal note, Mark, I want to say I appreciate you very much, our friendship. I'm going to miss you. I think you're one of the best. I'm sorry you decided not to run, but I guess Lisa told you, it's enough's enough. And I appreciate your decision. But God bless you and just, I just wish you the best.
Thank you.
And other than that, guys, one last thing. If you start coughing, just a kind of public service announcement, you can vouch for this, Ms. Hoover. If you start coughing, get it checked out. If you start feeling pain. The reason why I say that is, my wife was exposed, I don't know how, but she's got pneumonia. And we were on a trip to Concord this weekend on Friday for Polar Express, and we had to come back Saturday, because she had a fever. And when I took her to Scott Hills ER and down in Hampstead yesterday, sure enough, she had left lung larynx. had left lung lower quadrant pneumonia. And the doctors didn't seem surprised, and he told me, this was at 2:00 in the afternoon, he said that she was the seventh person that came in that day for pneumonia. And he said that there's a big rise and increase in the pneumonia cases. So if you start getting that feeling of coughing and hacking, and, you know, you just feel tired, you have a slight fever, go get it checked out. They'll give you some medicine, put you on bedrest, and you should be good. And I do that because it caught us by surprise. I never thought she would get pneumonia, but she did. So just keep that in mind. Otherwise, thank you, guys, for attending. I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting, which will be shorter, be our admin meeting, and we've got a new board coming on board, and I'm excited, and I'm excited for Onslow County. So thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Just the folks that come in and spoke tonight, Amy, I didn't get your last name, I'm sorry, I don't want to say that incorrectly. We appreciate you coming tonight. I think lots of things have been done with how we do that with attorneys, and we appreciate you sharing your thoughts and concerns. And lots of work going on with Jacksonville and Onslow County of trying to work and develop affordable housing across the county, but we appreciate you coming in and sharing your thoughts on that. Like you said, I think you said it was your first meeting like this, so it's not easy always to come up and speak at a microphone to a board and then know it's live for everybody. Mr. Green, they've already covered it all, but I will say the first thing, I'm going to thank you, because whenever I asked you to hit pause, you absolutely didn't argue with that, anything at all, you understood completely and continued on with what your concerns were and the fact that you brought it to us. We're hearing it, and we're definitely going to do the best we can to find, as Commissioner Buchanan said, find, find a solution to what's going on, whatever that may, whatever that may be. Orville the Osprey, I like the whole nickname there of naming the Osprey, that works great, but just the fact that it's the Jacksonville Ospreys, you know, because we've got a couple of different types of Ospreys flying over Onslow County all the time, is tilt rotor aircraft at New River Air Station, and then we have the, I think it's indigenous to this area, the Osprey itself that's constantly flying around. But one thing I do want to point out, that a lot of you may know, a lot of you may not know, but I'm going to share it. Their new head coach was their pitcher and then assistant with them last year, Josiah Zamora. Josiah is a graduate of Southwest High School. It's nice to have an Onslow County guy running the program.
Of course.
General Manager Dylan Hughes, who is a graduate of White Oak High School. So we appreciate that we've got some Onslow County guys there. But talking about Onslow County baseball, it could go all the way back to Louis Meadows and, and the folks from White Oak, but White Oak's got a pretty good tradition of putting guys in the majors. One in particular got to celebrate the World Series Champions, Los Angeles Dodgers, and that's Chad Faunville, also a White Oak graduate, and I believe Chad is coaching at White Oak now, if I'm not mistaken, and he spent a few seasons playing for the Dodgers, not in the farm league, but in the big show. So it's good to see all the stuff that's going on with local people than Eli bringing this to us. So we appreciate you coming here and all the things that is, that has taken place with that. The last thing is, is the Veterans Day last weekend, just to make sure I got it right in my head, was the parade, the birthday, all of those things were great to have, commissioners at some of those, some of us not. I had gone out of town, but I definitely followed what was going on back in Jacksonville, North Carolina, has the largest veteran population in the state of North Carolina, and it's, it's awesome to see that as those things continue to go. Now, I will say, you see the, the different statements about the Marine Corps celebrating their birthday, it's only 249 this year, they're relatively calm, but I've got a feeling that when the United States Marine Corps in Jacksonville, North Carolina celebrates 250 years.
Hang on.
You might want to get a ticket, because it's going to be an exciting time in celebration of the United States Marine Corps and, and the town, the city of Jacksonville in Onslow County. Closing that out with celebrating Annie Beth, Annie Belle Kennedy, we did a proclamation celebrating her 100th birthday over the weekend, so she's seen a lot. I bet if we interviewed her, we could sit there for hours just to hear the history from her eyes, through her eyes, that would be something. So I know her family was excited to celebrate 100 years with her. Those of you that are asking about education and how education spiked on the, on the presentation Ms. Patterson gave us, is that it looks as if we funded more to education, but the funding formula is based on our revenue. Our revenue was higher, so 36.1% shows to be higher, so that increases the funding, funding there. With that all being said, Reefs Across America, Chris is gone. Chris actually worked for my dad at WIIZ back in the 80s, the Wiz Wizard. I grew up knowing Chris, it was wake up with Chris Marks and drive home with Terry Downing, and I learned a lot from the announcers that worked for my dad at that radio station. Chris has always been a community-minded individual, and working with that, and the Reefs Across America is huge in his heart as it is for all of us in a community of veterans. The things he said has lived with purpose. There's no doubt if you join the military, you're living, you're living with purpose. He stayed to remember the fallen, honor the serving, and teach the value of freedom. I think those are all things that need to be shared and said. And the last thing, I promise, 17 dollars for the wreaths, and I'll close with Jamie Johnson. I don't know if anyone knows the country music artist, Jamie Johnson, but he has a song out on his new album called 21 Guns, and part of the lyrics is what we'll close with. "A preacher stammers through a nice verse, does his best to eulogize. At times like this, there ain't no right words. The rifles fire, and your life flashes right before your eyes. I don't need to tell no one to tell me you're a hero. Heck, I've known that ever since you were young. And there ain't no words to say how proud we all are of you. Nothing says job well done like 21 guns." Need a motion to adjourn.
Submit.
Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, we're adjourned.